All right, it's Monday, December 1st, 2025, 9 o'clock. We have a special board staff discussion. First up on the agenda is North Iowa Events Center. And what we do is we go to the podium because you can be live on video for all to see. And PlayStation, your name for the record.
Hello, my name's Kathy Lutt. I'm the president of the North Iowa Fair Association.
Kristen, why don't you introduce the general answer?
I am Lindsay James and I serve on the board at the North Iowa Fair Association.
We had submitted in December some information for you to review regarding our last two fiscal events and some of the key financial changes, the times too. We've also submitted for you a series of bids that we had received because our property has 146 of the dead ash trees from the ash core infestation that the city went through. We would, we are here to try to receive help in funding that through the county because we frankly don't have the kind of revenue engine on our own that will support paying the costs that were on those bids. You know, what we're mainly looking at at the fairgrounds is we serve for a lot of community events. We attract people from across the Midwest to events at our location. And we have to worry about safety, liability for their vehicles, any damage along the way, and the visual appeal. It's a project we have to get done, but we cannot do it with our own finances. So we'd like to know if there is any way that you could help us with this project as we lease the property from the county.
We are pursuing grant opportunities. We've submitted a grant application to the Hanson Family Foundation. That deadline was today. There are several other grant opportunities coming up. Unfortunately, tree removal doesn't necessarily meet the criteria of the projects that they like to fund. We probably have a variety of other projects that would better meet their criteria due to funds, but we are, we are seeking assistance where we think we, we can get it. But also the matching funds needed for, for the removal. We don't necessarily have those matching funds on our own either. So some sort of partnership with the county would be greatly appreciated to help us take care of this issue as quickly as possible for safety and as soon as it starts.
Do you got anything else, question?
Just up to bid range from $84,000 to $161,000. There is a great huge chunk of change to get rid of 146 trees.
Go ahead.
Unfortunately, years ago, diversification of the precincts wasn't a priority. And it seems to be the majority of trees are ash. And then over the last several decades, the Emerald Ash Forest kind of marched itself across eastern United States right on through and devastating the ash tree population. Very unfortunate. It was something that, you know, 30 years ago, you wouldn't have thought of, but we have to deal with it now. Now, by code, the fairgrounds is independent board. The county has no financial responsibility. The city doesn't have any financial responsibility towards the fairgrounds. Not saying I don't support it, I'm just saying we don't have any, anything stating that we have to fund this or anything like that. That's why you're coming to us asking for money. So what I did, and oh, you're not mad at me. I invited a few other players to the table here today. See if we could facilitate something to get this done in a, in a very cost friendly fashion. We have Brandon, who is with the county engineering department. He's the county engineer and he's in charge of the secondary road crews, all the big equipment, everything for taking down trees and, and moving trees and stuff of that nature. We have Mr. Collins from the city. And if you'd want to introduce yourself and what, what you do.
Sure. Good morning, everybody. I am Jim Collins. I am the director of public works with the city of Mason City. And I do a variety of things, but today I brought with me a couple of my supervisors. And we're here to listen to see what it is that the fairgrounds needs and wants. And then with that, I plan to take it to my city administrator and discuss what, if anything, we can do.
Then we have Josh with County Conservation. And you're used to clearing road sides and things of that nature. So we have kind of the players in our area that are used to handling trees and how to get rid of them. Well, I also invited Jamie Medlin, the fire marshal, and to answer any questions about disposing of the trees on the property. And I have discussed that in detail with them. I just wanted them here so I wouldn't be in the middle, but I guess today I'm going to be in the middle. And that's fine. I, he's a very busy man, lots of, lots of other engagements. But, but I was wondering if we could come to some kind of, facilitate some kind of help with other government agencies to get these trees taken care of. I know there are some trees that probably have to hire somebody to come in and do that are overhanging buildings, power lines, things of that nature, the more complicated ones. But the majority of the trees are smaller and shouldn't be as hard. So is there anything between this group that we could talk and discuss that we could, we could figure out a way that we could team together, a city, county, fairgrounds partnership to get these trees taken care of, or at least the vast majority taken care of? Because the city has a lot to gain with the fairgrounds being healthy because of the economic impact of all the different shows and events that you have at, at the fairgrounds. And so does the county. We all benefit from the economic impact of that, of that facility. So what can we do to help to try to keep this a healthy environment for economic impact coming into Mason City? So any ideas? I mean, what kind of, what kind of different services could you possibly offer if we could have some kind of partnership and to get together and knock some of these out?
So at this point, the roads department, we don't have extensive, the way we take, take trees out, which we've you guys too well. But what we can do is if they're sized appropriately for us to get them into our dump trucks, we can use our loader and put them in a dump truck and haul them up to a burn pit and help that, you know, help dispose of them at that point. But they would have to be down in size and we'll grab them with our grapple and put them in the truck and, you know, dispose of them. I know there's an area on the fairgrounds that stuff could possibly be burned that shouldn't affect other things according to the maps and according to the fire marshal. Looking at what do you guys have around? So I think we can burn them on site relatively safely, as long as the wind's in the right, you know, all the conditions are correct. So I know, and that portion I can help with. I just know tearing them down is not something that, I, I just don't think what we do to a tree is going to work out very well for you guys.
And fire marshal just showed Jamie Medlin. We, we're discussing the trees at the fairgrounds and how to dispose of them. So Mr. Collins or your supervisor?
So yeah. Want to stand up there or?
You can right there is fine, ask some questions.
My supervisors went out. Can you, can you give a briefing of what you saw when you drove around?
Well, besides the ash trees, there's, so there's more than 147 trees out there because there's 147 ash trees or whatever number it was.
There's a lot of scraggly mapples.
A few other soft maples that were planted 50 years ago that are at their end of their life, especially much of scrub trees along East End that bust up with the target property line. Near right, your assessment, there's a lot of trees that can be gnashed and dropped that aren't technical removals that dump them on the ground, pick them up with the loader, put them in the back of the truck and hopefully take them a couple thousand feet and burn them. You know, I think that's, that's the cheapest route. Some of the trees that are on the west property line where the, I don't know, the hookups are for hunter jumper, whatever, the horse people. You know, some of them trees in there are a day each. You know, when you're dealing with power box and things of that nature, you can't just notch them and drop them. You're going to destroy something. And the other issue is too, is that there it gets a lot of use. So it's, when do you get it done?
Happening between the events out there.
Well, right, I mean, but it's, you know, but for us, we run two full-time harvest crews, 40 weeks a year, unless it's snowing or super cold, the guys are out working. But so my, your assessment is, is pretty fair. Dump, dump as many as you can. A lot of them on the east side by the racetrack, I think, or you certainly could and then pick them up and get rid of them.
I just, so we have more than enough work for either of these two crews. We have years of work for them. And so if we pull them off of city work, that just extends, we just still have to make that up. So, and the city taxpayers, of course, are paying their wages. So, which also pay the county, I'm sure. But so I guess what I'm saying is we don't have gaps of time where we don't have our own trees to, to pull down. There, it's solid. We haven't even got to our city parks yet. We're just doing the boulevards and the streets and things. So.
No, I understand that completely. And you're just as financially responsible for that as we are.
Right.
Because we're kind of on the outside of it. It's the fairgrounds independent board that runs the fairgrounds. Even though the county owns the property, the county's not responsible for it. So the whole thing is, it's just the economic impact that the fairgrounds provides for the, for the city and for the county. I was just wondering if there anything we could do to help them out. I know you have your work, we have our work. Josh, you have your work to do. It's not like we're sitting around with nothing to do. Nobody's doing that. But is there any way, would the city be willing to spend a few days just to kind of knock some of the bulk of the, the trees out of there? I logged for 10 years, I know what it takes. I didn't go around power lines, I didn't go around buildings. I'm on the timber, it's a little bit different. We knock it over, you take the scaring, you pull it out. It's, it's a different animal, but at least I understand what it takes to actually get trees removed. And if we had a few crews, we could go out there for a couple of days this winter and just start knocking some out and hauling them to the burn pile. You'd be surprised how much we could get done, not counting especially trees that where they're overhanging and everything. That's a whole different, that's a whole thing when you have to start roping and all that, but.
A question that would be asked of me is how many, how many funds are set aside by, by the board to take care of the trees? Is it, do you have 10,000, do you have 50,000? What, and what's, what's your budget for it?
And with the onset, it seems more familiar with the timeline within the city and all of that. We were not, you know, in our long-term budget, that has not been part of what we have been undertaking or planning to undertake was that, with all these trees. Over the last couple of years, I would say is when we did things that cut back the cost of the fair while it actually ensured a better situation with the fair by cutting costs, but that's not major money maker. And we have rentals that has fixed as best she can. But there's a lot of expenses that go with that because all the upkeep on all buildings where every rental happens is coming out of our budgeting. So we don't, we have 53,000 in cash as of the end of the month, last month. And that is, you know. That's all consumed throughout the year. That's not any kind of excess. The building that we were able to put up with the horse facility has been funded through its own set of grants and very generous donations from the city to help the city clear lake estates and individuals. And that is closing in with, in that budget that was set for it. We have a little extra money on that, but we'll go towards finishing up some installation on there. I'd say no, that's a long answer to your question.
Are you saying zero?
With that 50,000 that she mentioned, we have like 10,000 dollars out there. Most of our power bill alone is over to protect the buildings so that our payments don't freeze this year. So, you know, I would say we don't have anything to look towards at this time. Just because I wouldn't want to run out of money and not be able to pay them bills.
Gone through the next budget cycle and, and thought about it?
We've been looking at the fair budget in particular and started to assess, you know, where the rentals are. There's a couple of different options that Kristen's arranged for this year that will actually bring in a little more money than we've gotten in the past. But it's, it's still leaps and, I mean, it's not leaps and bounds, it's outreach. And it's what's, we're able to do with our own contacts that we have and trying to get extra horse events. That's something I try to do. She's been working on things inside the fairgrounds. We've been working on a regional event to come in.
Basically, the money that you have left right now is just going to cover your expenses for the down season?
We have, we have one event coming up this weekend. And then I think we have one in January. February it starts to pick up, we have the whole show and the block sale and stuff like that. And then it'll get busy again after that. But these couple of months here, we have that be going on and it's not enough to pay the bill.
So the time to do this would be now and there's nothing going on?
In their defense, I would just throw in my two cents, but I've been going to the fair board meetings for nine years now. Not as a board member, but as a, somebody to help them where we can, bring back ideas. And Josh and Brandon have helped them over the last nine years, but this is a bigger project. They don't have the funds. And the fairgrounds has turned around that corner like three years ago. The last two years were probably the best years fair has had. And they just want to keep the momentum growing. It's a building time, rebuilding time, and they can't do it with nothing. So with Carl's putting together this little group, I guess, is where we thought we'd go from here.
And then if fire marshal could give an opinion on the disposal of the trees on property or burning on the property, I have a map here if you could, if you'd want to look at it or not. Or, and what are the options for burning these trees on site with the help of the county engineering department with an excavator and things like that?
You know, so on things in the city called a wild bird, we got certain number of acres due to agriculture that will result out there. But in itself, you could look at around burning of product that was just started before or after sunrise and extinguish before sunset. So I always like to say if you have a branch that's probably eight inches plus, if not covered, you can just move it out of the case. It's left would probably be the most part of understanding.
They go pretty quick when you have an excavator, keep pushing them in. I mean, you get a lot, and ashes has the inherent ability to burn faster than other trees, especially if it's dead. But even when it's green, ash will actually burn down a lot better than most, so.
Wild tree mean? Another piece of that requirement is as far, so what you're asking to make sure we're not disrupt many.
You still mend on the race track thing?
Well, I mean, of course, we can, we can find a stand, on standby out there. I suppose tell a little bit, make sure that the fire doesn't, you know, do this.
Hey, Brandon, you were looking at that corner off the racetrack, right? If there's a possibility?
At northeast corner.
Right above the Mason Township.
Where's it at?
Is that north of the motocross or what used to be the motocross area?
Right where the cursor's at, up in that area.
It's a little farther to the west. I mean, just go south, it's just under the M for Mason. It's just farther than there. Not to grab, the actual where the M is, there's a.
Oh, yeah, there's a pile of, yeah.
So Jim, maybe you know this question as far as the city, because they just extended. I saw it on Facebook and, you know, everything on Facebook's true. Just this last week, as far as they extended their delivery 30 miles as far as logs to, because you've got so many. Do you, is that still a, are you able to get rid of them quick enough? People taking them?
I think we're fully subscribed.
I mean, as far as burning the littler stuff, according to Jim back there, you know, on site, maybe is there alternatives for maybe city or county trucks to deliver some of the bigger stuff?
That's a huge expense and time to haul that stuff everywhere.
It's just a thought I threw out there.
I thought you could use on that is maybe if you have, you know, like trunk wood that's dropped, you know, six, eight foot length, give it away for free. Bring a trailer, we'll throw it on a trailer for you. You haul it away, it's gone.
It's a good idea, too.
If your liability insurance will allow them on your property with trailers, you would have to probably provide loading.
Yeah, I'd set a piece of paper that the liability is a big part of it.
We're starting to see though, too, like anything over 30 inch trunk diameter, which you don't have very many of them out there. I think there's some, um, big stuff we are, we're having trouble getting rid of because there's only so many people that are equipped to deal with a lot of, you know, 30 inch plus wood. And we're seeing that stack up for us also. Just, just FYI, if you're trying to give it away that way, there's the number of people that can take it and process it in 30 miles is relatively few.
Especially the ash, it'll burn up pretty quick. And then with an excavator to put, keep pushing it in, that's huge to, to keep that, keep pushing. If you just light it on fire and leave it, yeah, you'll have stuff smaller for a week or two. But to keep pushing it in, pushing it in, and then when it's done, you just bury it. That's pretty efficient. I've been involved with clearing grows, farm places when corn went up and price, everybody's clearing everything and you'd be surprised, even cottonwood, you know, 36 inch cottonwood will burn up in a matter of hours when you do that, so.
I'm wondering, I appreciate Carl bringing this group together. Obviously, we, we're not going to solve it today, right? Because everybody needs to go back and visit. But I was wondering if maybe this team gets together, maybe a little bit smaller and have a committee. I, I mean, everyone doesn't like committees, but once in a while, that's what it takes to keep the ball rolling. So, I mean, I'm in support of trying to do what we can with a private public partnership through the various players and you all know more about it than, than certainly I do. So I feel like the next steps would be you visit with people you need to. We're all coming up on the budget season, but it sounds like it'd be nice to get some of those staying here prior to that. And so if we've got the experts at the table, have a game plan, then we reconvene as to, you know, the authorities that have the discretion of, you know, enacting employees, that would, that would maybe be the next steps in my mind.
Yeah, the key players are here, they would just need to talk and see what they could do.
Sure.
And if you can do anything.
Is Aaron the answer or is it city council?
I am. Aaron's unaware of any of this right now and it'll be his decision.
He's aware of the trees because he's talked to the board about your problem.
Oh, has he? Well, I was unaware of that.
I think the, the big question is would the city object to trying to partner with the county to come up with a reasonable solution? I mean, I think that's the, and I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I go, I, but I think that's the first conversation.
I agree.
It's very vague right now and say, hey, if a group of people get together and there's, there's a reasonable game plan, would you object? And I mean, if, if not, then we continue with the conversation. If not, then we need to punt and go with whatever Plan B, C, or D is. And we don't know what that looks like right now. But this is helping continue the conversation.
Very fairly, sure, where the city is standing.
I would offer to help facilitate this entire thing if, because you need somebody for everybody to talk to. And I know you all have busy jobs too.
I think that would be good if Carl's willing to help coordinate, which, you know, is all the players involved and find a time to convene again and, and keep, keep things moving. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think you did a perfect job on taking them down around town. I did a lot of mid-sized trees. I had one of those outside wood burners for 10 years and, you know, I offered to work. They wouldn't let me liability. I thought I got one. But anyway, I think one, one solid day out there would, to experience that you guys have would make a big difference because those, those mid-sized trees, I think you can drop right there.
Through your notch and drop trees, yeah, we could drop a lot of them in a day.
Yeah.
But the ones that, like you say, are around power lines or around the utility boxes for the camper and stuff, yeah, there's a little more finesse needed there to not destroy any of the infrastructure.
Right.
Well, even if we have to enlist in private contractors to help, but to, to have the group of experts here that have a game plan, and then if it makes sense to bring someone in, then we can talk about funding and whatnot. To, I, I, I think it's going to be more than just the city of Mason City and Syracuse or County. I think there probably, it's going to be a gaggle of people that need to be involved. But I think that makes the most sense, in my opinion.
Hope everybody has my contact information. You can just see if you're willing to be a player or not in this game and let me know. We can go from there.
Be able to help, we'll see what we can do.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment, Carl, I appreciate that you did this. Thank you very much for bringing people together today to help move this forward. Yeah, like, thank you.
Well, the economic impact that the fairgrounds, all the events bring to the area, you know, there's, even though we're not legally, financially bound to do anything, but we all benefit from it. So if we can all get together and work together just for a little bit to try to help mitigate the situation, I think we definitely should get the process.
Thanks, guys, for coming in.
Thank you, everyone.
Quick last question, does the fairgrounds still have any storage space available? How much?
What do you need to store?
Just some equipment.
Yeah.
I know years ago, we used to store some street sweepers out there in the winter. It's, I'm talking 25, 30 years ago. I just wondered if any of that storage space was still available.
Yep, I do have some space in the small animal park and arena.
Yes, yes, these conversations, this is perfect. Anything we can do to, that we all benefit.
Yeah.
That's a win-win, so.
Thanks, James.
Thank you for the partnership, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, skip down to Eric and the emergency management update.
I'm here.
I'm here. Yeah, I, uh, I'm Eric. We'll consider it done recently before you hear. Hey, guys.
Speaking of, speaking of the mic.
Looking for it. Oh, I saw that. I'll wait here for a second. Carl, uh, has requested, rightfully so, uh, some coverage maps on the. This is, uh, local enhancement project possibility. So, um, this first slide is showing the current. Portable in building coverage. So that's, uh, a radio that's on your hip. And while you're inside a building, there you go. There we go. Um, as you can see on the western half of the county there on that first slide. Uh, go back one year. Uh, it's quite a bit of dust off there and it's kind of, uh, I don't know. Yellow color, the purple color is the coverage area of at least ninety-five percent. Of it working with three, three quarters, that is.
No.
Just one. Uh, we have access to the system. So, uh, you can see that. And then you move forward to the next slide. Uh, it shows that same scenario in building coverage with the local enhancement, uh, there in Clear Lake, the triangle to see. Um, so that's in building. And then if you go to the next slide, that is current portable on-street coverage. See that there's, um, quite a bit of lacking coverage there in the southern, uh, south shore there. Of Clear Lake and then down, um, in certain areas, valleys there south of. Southern there and also in the northwest part of the county. And if you go to the next slide, you can see that kind of clears up with that, um. With that coverage, uh, the additional local enhancement. Um, with a lot of that really Ventura and the surrounding areas being covered by. You know, a, a law enforcement officer, EMS, fire, if they're out in, in those areas, uh. They would be able to reach dispatch with their portable, uh, radios on, yeah, without having to go back to their vehicles to call in. And that's, uh, especially for law enforcement, well, sometimes fire and EMS, we've seen ambushes before, uh, other areas of the country, but. Uh, law enforcement, especially if they're out of their vehicles and, um, need to, need to, uh, reach dispatch and they're in an area that's not covered there. Um, well, this local enhancement would greatly. But in a positive way.
Just because I don't know Eric, sure, going to ask, but so this is looking. Of this stuff here.
Yeah, that's, um, you know, I think in the past, we've known that. Adding just one additional local enhancement wouldn't be able to cover the entire county. Um, that down there in the southwestern part of the county would require another, another felony area, uh, in the future.
I would also like to point out that when you, when you see the white on the, on the map, it doesn't mean it doesn't have coverage. It means it doesn't meet the ninety-five percent access to the system. It could be ninety, it could be ten. The tool put the colored paint when it's ninety-five percent reliable and even access the system.
And Doherty being in the southeast part, that's one of our communities in the county too, so.
I will say that, um, Butler County is, uh, going to, it's, it's, they're in the process of, uh. Going to that, to our system, the, the state system right now. So with their towers going up, they may, that may, um. Know the Doherty area with them going live. It might mistake it on that.
Yeah, they're currently using Isixes, but they have contracted it in our, our open to be put into that site, uh, in that county, yeah.
So this is all for portable. What about, uh, vehicle units?
Mobile is, uh, is covered very well, um, not in building. Um, I didn't add those in because it's a similar scenario. I mean, it really is. Um, it's. With that additional local enhancement, uh, Clear Lake Ventura in the western part of Mason City would see, uh. Better coverage with that local enhancement in Bill or, uh, in building, I guess, mobile. If I, because I showed the portable in building, that's more likely what you're going to, to be utilizing. Um, you know, I don't think you'll have a vehicle parked inside of a building very often, but that's why I would just use the portable to show. Does that make sense?
Right. I think by fire code, that buildings, large buildings can be required to put repeaters in them at the expense of the business or hospital or whatever it is.
But the port, yes, that was like, yeah, and but the portable coverage in building with, like, that's of those first two slides there. Um, would, um, so that's the, that's the in-building right now, um, as is. And then I go to the next slide, that really clears up a lot of Clear Lake Ventura and surrounding areas, uh, with that local enhancement even in building.
Would it be better to, let's just say a tower is a tower. You can put it anywhere.
Sure.
If you went just north of Swaledale, would that cover the area better or would it not hit the area north of Clear Lake?
You're talking in-building. We did look at a lot of different sites and a lot of different options to get this banked a lot. And where you're trying to cover it, in-building, it doesn't travel as far, because you're trying to get to all of that structure, so.
You got more slides, Eric?
No, most of the four. I'm having to answer any other questions about the coverage and of the assistance.
I was just curious because there's more population in the Thornton, Missouri area than there is in the very top corner.
Right. But like Tracy said, bang for your buck, obviously, the bigger population in that area would be the Clear Lake Ventura in the western part of Mason City. Uh, and then, uh, like in between, uh.
Because you have a water tower there. It's the big reason. Is it because of water towers there? Is that the big reason for making it a little more cost effective?
That what would be, uh, instead of putting up a tower, a standalone tower, uh, by putting it on the water tower where it shows right now, uh, saves about a half billion dollars.
Why that particular location considering it's so far on the western edge of the county? I mean.
Because there's already one on the, there's already one on the eastern side.
Red dot, sorry. Red dot, sorry. Already towers.
I think it was a disadvantage of having a water tower there. I mean, we, we limited options. Save that half a million dollars instead of putting up a, a standalone tower. Um, you know, one of those two water towers in that area would be, I mean, it's just, they say it's convenience.
At our last meeting, then there was a gentleman that was here, um, and brought up, and I don't remember what the other one was. And I don't have any loyalty one way or the other, so I'm throwing it out there to give you mention Starlink. And I don't remember what the other one was, but, um.
I don't know how that would, um.
But I'm assuming you would as your, their competitors of yours or?
Starlink is a backhaul.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that would, um, I don't know how that would satellite, what we currently have, but I'm.
More satellite based?
Yeah.
Yeah. The thing that concerned me when I was looking through those things was not only the, the price, obviously, but, uh. Were, what we're obligating future boards of the county to with an agreement like that, because if you look back at some of the previous, uh. Yearly leases ten years ago versus now, and what are they going to be in ten years? That concerns me. Any response there?
So, and you're referring to the out-year maintenance costs and so forth, yeah. So, you know, this is a system that your tax dollars are already putting in, that are already in place. You guys are utilizing the system today. And so your tax dollars are paid for a lot of like that Mason City tower. You, you're not paying for any maintenance on that. Your tax dollars are going towards supporting that and. Three main brains of the system that are, um, supporting the system as well. Your councils are probably going to be, um, that. Isn't statewide system. So you are taking that base platform that provides eighty-five percent of the statewide law is. I'm sorry, ninety-five percent of the state of Iowa is covered with being able to drive around in the car and access the system. So as you drive around the county, you're going to have, you know, ninety-five percent more coverage by the normal. The maintenance that you are seeing in the proposal is from your local enhancement, um, to maintaining that public safety mission critical equipment. Um, you have in your proposal, I believe it has got, you know, five years of maintenance in there. So you see how it has gone up with the cost of living increases. You're seeing that, um, that tends to keep going further than that. Um, as you go past five years, if you can talk to neighbors like Worth County, Wright County. Agreements that have gone longer than that and it doesn't like fully change. It's very consistent like with what you have in front of you as an example. Also in the contract language, you can enhance that V P S of any type. And so it's continually up to you, but this mission critical equipment that, you know, lives are on the line.
Based on, um, others that are using the system now, um, what have they incurred for? Maintenance issues, if I may ask?
Well, those services are, um, uh, it's very robust. There is preventative maintenance that goes into place. There's monitoring of the equipment that happens and also, um. If, if there are parts or anything like that, that need to be replaced. Also, a key part of it is the software upgrade agreements so that it keeps all of the equipment at the same version as the marketplace. So every two years, the ISIX statewide system does go through an upgrade. And part of your maintenance agreement would keep your local enhancement equipment also, uh, upgraded along with all of your rest. So that it, it protects your investment in the system and it also protects that all of the responders, there's currently over forty-seven thousand. Plus users in Iowa using the system, having them have the best solution that they can have. Software-wise of marketplace. So there is quite a bit of, of, uh, items there. When you sign an agreement and you go, it takes us twelve to eighteen months to deploy the site that we're talking about. And then once it's accepted, that's when you go into your first year of warranty, which is included. In the project. So it would be two to two and a half years from now is when you would see the maintenance. And that first bill of maintenance. And during that whole two and a half years, you can sit with Motorola and look at that maintenance agreement. Making sure that it fits your needs and what you want to move into. And then you can also do that every year.
I got one more there. Um, it seems like, uh, we're down to a pressure point, like deadline, which Eric sent us a message the other day. We got another week, seven days, five business days. What's the deal there? This is like end of the year, no offense, but end of the year commission or?
Has nothing to do with me. It has a lot to do with, you know, just standard business, right? Especially these planning. Um, your project was proposed in October, so, um, we can hold that pricing for the about sixty days, which was October. I mean, September, um, fifteenth.
November.
September fifteenth and then, um, I'd have to redo the, the pricing. So if you go past.
First.
No, it will go up, especially as you go from one calendar year to the next calendar year. And the incentive that is also been offered to you is tied to a date and that's. Motorola, um, offers incentives so that we can predict when your projects are going to come in for forecasting. And also it's a win for you to help, you know, it's a cost incentive to keep focused and keep things coming together. Uh, we understand that it takes a lot to put things to go to sign these agreements. And so that is why they also. Incentives tied to things.
Even so, if we said yes or whatnot, from what I gathered, correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, but, uh, there's not enough turnaround time to do that. Bonding wise and stuff.
Definitely don't have time to bond. That, that takes a while. Um, even if you wanted to do the lease option. You know, we'd have to have a public hearing, so we'd have to meet the publication deadlines.
A publication deadline, we, we spoke with Heather and Heather and Fire, um, you know, the early as to be able to have them agenda for a public hearing. Something with twenty ninth December. So what that means is that I need to try to pressure her. If you, if you decide you. Kind of want us to keep moving forward, do you pressure her to pressure Motorola to extend that another week so we can get that public hearing in the twenty ninth? Um, and I'll try to explain a little bit about the lease bond, um, scenario. Um, if, you know, obviously, like Heather said, there's not enough time to bond on the, you know, so for the twenty ninth of December. Um, what other counties have done, um, is to go with the lease option. Um, and then be able to bond after that at any point and pay off that lease without penalty. So some, some counties have leased and then, and within the next few months, be able to bond with that and pay that lease off. I kind of explained that correctly.
More to the lease versus bond?
The interest rate is a little higher to, to lease, but there's cost and multiple, there's a cost for putting a bond together. I can't answer that. These guys can. But, you know, the lease is not designed to be competitive with bonding. The lease is a, as a financial tool that. Motorola's market has pressured Motorola to be able to offer to support projects like this. So it's another tool that we can offer. For you to be able to move projects forward, um, and keep your responders safe. Um, it, you do have the ability to pay it off early. Um, I have provided an example of the, of the lease agreement. It's the same lease agreement that others in Iowa have utilized. Um, and it would be, you would be looking at signing the contract with Motorola and then signing the lease agreement at the same time. Um, and talking with, uh, Heather, your auditor, you guys could meet. You could choose to post that public hearing and have that public hearing on December twenty ninth. And be able to do that. I would just need to go back and ask what to accommodate the twenty ninth instead of the twenty second.
So I just, I've, I've been on the, uh, nine one one commission. This conversation's gone on. Recently, probably more elevated the last budgetary. And so I'm not necessarily at all opposed to the project, but I can tell you from. Sitting in those meetings, there was not necessarily universal consensus, and I'm not saying it has to be unanimous, but there was. There was some discussion as to the dollars, some discussion as to the location. And in my perspective, all the stakeholders know a lot more about this than I do. And so I'm not prepared at this time to, to vote from a county perspective. Um, to go forward with this proposal. It's, like I said, from the onset, it certainly doesn't mean I don't support it, but. Um, I would feel more comfortable waiting until they convene, which is usually in February. Uh, and get more consensus from the stakeholders to confirm this is the location. This is where we want to go and then, um, go from there as far as the financial aspects go.
Right, okay, agree with you. I just think that, uh, based on our last, um, you know, budget season. Um, and allocating four hundred thousand dollars towards the project, we did, you know, vote on that budget and it did pass, so. I can imagine the majority, like you said, there are dissenters.
For sure.
Um, but obviously the majority feels that it was a, a worthy project.
Yeah. And I, I don't disagree. Yeah, no, and I appreciate you, you bringing it up again and, and all those things.
And I, I want, I'm your advocate. He's across the state for eleven years. I'm here to help you guys to understand the information. Um, by being able to move forward and I'm offering the leasing and the different funding tools to be able to keep your costs down. Um, by looking at, you know, working with your agencies here within the county. It's, you guys have indicated that you wanted to enhance your coverage. You would have the ability to sign a contract in December and save costs, lock in those pricing and still work with Motorola. On looking at options during that deployment timeframe. Um, it's just going to push out. When I said twelve to eighteen months, it might push it out a little further as far as when it's deployed, but you could move. You could look at all of this and still maintain those cost savings.
Sure.
So, uh, we don't do change orders unless they're mutually agreed upon. What we're kind of talking about is if you, it could work out that this is what you guys, you know, we've been working on for quite a long time and, um. If you want to stay with that, or if you decided you wanted to change it, you would be able to choose to do that. But not have the cost increase that, that you're looking at. See, that's why I, I owe it.
For sure.
Because I've had other counties.
Sure. Yeah, no, and I, I certainly appreciate the position you're in and, and, and all that help that you brought to this discussion. Um, but again, I guess just my feeling from being in those discussions. Um, I'm not a hundred percent, and I know, and it, and it, I, I, I concur with you that the, the vast majority would support. Um, the general concept, but as they say, the devil's in the details and, um. I didn't feel like there was enough robust conversation in that room to really get there. Uh, my instincts were, let's allocate four hundred to keep the conversation going. Or to make the conversation go away. I'm not sure which one. So I would just feel more comfortable if there was more clarity and so. Because of that, I, I don't think I would support it until after, after the first of the year and, and that, that group convening.
But there's stuff that's, oh, that I do. Do they just short out and then they would have a special?
They certainly can, if there's just a lot of stakeholders and, uh, you know, EMS from various areas of our county. Uh, including the smaller communities, which a lot of times are, aren't at the table. And I think this is important enough that they need to be. Um, but again, I, I don't want, I don't want my, uh. Comments to be led that I, I don't support the project, so.
And with all respect to you, in case you sit on the nine-one-one board, I guess I'll defer to my colleague and, uh, hopefully.
I concur. I would have to hear exactly where they stand in what their future plans are before I support it.
hear exactly, really standard what their future plans are before I support it.
I guess it's hurry up and wait, uh I guess it's hurry up and wait where we're at right now, or at least sounds like that's the consensus, so thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming again.
Yeah.
You guys, if you're comfortable with your needs.
As hopefully, we're gonna make sure it works.
Hopefully, the next year, we'll be able to, if we if the nine one one board decides to move forward again with allocated bonds. Yeah, and like this will here, we can, we're uh getting a proposal.
And maybe they'll be unanimous in the project, they just don't want to give up the funding for some of the other things, and that that, and even if they don't do that, that doesn't mean that we won't support it, but but I I just wouldn't, yeah, you got the point of the conversation.
Sure.
And you will you will consider trying to give emergency meetings, like I understand where they're saying, but more.
Um I think considering the timeline and the dollars involved, I don't I don't feel like it warrants an emergency meeting, because this is the conversation that's been going on, and just some of the sidebars from who I very much respect. Um I I didn't sense the urgency. Um doesn't mean that something can't happen, and and it's very important, but these are the folks that are in the midst of all these emergency, I mean, previous sheriff, this and that, and so I guess, like I said, I some of the sidebar conversations uh didn't maybe present the urgency that you're presenting today.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Brandon. Take it back for last, right, Brandon?
Yeah, always. Thanks again for the conversation. Um at this point, I don't need it for the first one, I'll get ready. So the first thing I want to say, which is uh Rockwell, um this is really application for building permits and everything at Rockwell, it's become clear that we need to get a an meets and bounds survey on that property, know exactly where the borders are, to see if the building fits in the way we want, and know what kind of intent or intention we have to give in the city. And so as part of that, I reached out to the architect and asked him, he had some goals from surveying, meets and bounds, and they came back with a tool. And it brought up another another thing I needed to discover to you guys, is one of the two proposals has a full topographical survey with the uh geotechnical design that's needed on that site. We paid Cedar Valley testing and go out there and cores at the Rockwell building site, where you have what kind of soil underneath the proposed building, and it came back that the empty unit by the heating soil is recommended to be removed of that building and replaced with engineered fill. So that's gonna need, just like we did in Mason City, it's gonna need uh survey from both end to top or down for the third day, and come up with a plan as to what that fill is and where it's going, um just to count the project, but uh.
Can you bring up that property and show us, I like to, which parts of the property were were they, and I don't know if Casey, if you remember, maybe for two years, but uh they had some problems with that property, and they did dig it up and fill in the past, so I'm kind of curious where you're talking about versus what was there. It contaminated soil, if I recall.
I'm gonna walk up to that screen, point to this if you don't mind, so.
The the proposed building is gonna go from close to the law, to this building, admitting as close to the property line as it'll allow us to get. And I read that you correctly, this side needed about five feet of of removal replacement, and then it kind of eaters out to about two feet deep on this side of the property, so it's relatively even as to what the gradient is on there.
It's the contaminated soil, do you know?
That I am not sure of, I'm assuming it's where the uh fuel tanks were, which would be uh to the north of the existing building. But I guess I'm not aware of where that that area was dug out.
Do you remember that, Heather, that Jay and Phil and Bob had? I want to say not once, but twice, they had to uh remove soil.
I remember that, oh.
I guess in the interest of time where the crux of, just because we got our board meeting, so.
So what I was saying is, I'm gonna put on the table the the printed out version of that CVT soils test with the recommendations on it, so you guys can be aware of that, I can also email it to you. Along with the two proposed uh surveys, we got one back from BEI, which is a surveying company that for Camperwood, it's out of the town, and we got one back from B and K, which is obviously within the county. That they both have just the meets and bounds on it, but the BEI survey also has a second option of adding topographical with the geotechnical design on it, and it's just the meets and bounds on this thing, uh would cost about five thousand dollars. And to do the geotechnical design is about twenty thousand dollars on top of that. So I was just gonna do the meets and bounds within the secondary road department, but I guess I was I didn't want to go ahead and pay twenty-five thousand dollars for this for a project that I haven't gotten okayed by the board to say that we're gonna do a full removal and replacement of the soil and the property. So it's something I wanted you guys to consider, so I was gonna leave the information for you. Then we can have an official agenda item on a future board meeting to take back either the design or the quality of the board of that portion of this project.
So is Rockwell satisfied with what you've done now, I mean, if you met their requirements?
I can't do a building permit until I get the meets and bounds done, because I can't, I can't, or the building's gonna fall. Okay, so I I gotta get that portion done no matter what, so that that first five thousand dollars I need to spend regardless, if you're starting to apply some building permits, you get that going. But the part that I wanted to talk to you guys about and get you thinking about, but getting to the meat is the portion of the unit that actually will bring geotechnical work under the building. Uh other than that, I'm gonna leave some information for you on the table back there for you guys to look at, and then I'll email it to you over the course of the next week. Uh it has to do with that Murgian's, I'm not being funny, and uh the job description for that, the the woman job, I'll I'll talk to you if you do really bother you.
You got a couple minutes, what were you talking about as far as uh B twenty?
Okay, so up on Murgian's, there's twelve parcels on a blue uh and there's three owners of those twelve parcels. Nathan Rockwell owns eight of the twelve parcels, and he requests that that road be returned to the all areas and not be a public road anymore. The Burke House owns two parcels, not the northeast one, and a northwest portion of that. And they do not want that return, they want that to be maintained as a uh county road. And also Jason Hamilton, two of his wealth, and he said, for the moment, we'd like it to remain a public road, but he might be interested in the future. Uh deciding on the return, that's a private entrance or road or access or whatever, so it's something where we have a few options in here, I just want to talk to you guys about your themes on it. I said, I'll do it in the advisory with you, but so but you know that one person I don't say that as well would like it, uh you know, abandoned, you can right away abandon back to the public. And the other two people on the floor, they do not want return, so it's a kind of a difficult situation, but in the past, I kind of, the board was, you guys, they recommended a universal re-ins from all of the kind of property owners, but it's kind of how this how this one is, so I just wanted to make sure I get you guys to know your opinions on it before I officially tell them I'm not being full of anything at this point.
Is that your your opinion, so to say?
I don't, I don't believe the right thing to do at this point, we need to return it to, that's fully managed right away, return it to the public, just because we have apprehension from two of the landowners that are on that road, it would affect maybe the safety process that's widely purchased it. But it's, I just want to make sure I talk to you guys about all the options available on it. We can turn it to a local C road, we can change their classification to a road, so we can add gates to it. But that's all stuff that um the past have made a universal guy that's universal being for it, but like I said, because eight of the parcels are owned by one person for the parcel alone, I think people kind of, it's kind of a recent, a weird situation. So I make sure that I give you guys all the information and you make the best choice you can.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
With that, uh we will be done with our board staff, and it's.